We'll call this meeting the Jefferson County Council to order. We'll call, please.
Kraus. Tully.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Niles.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandle.
Here.
Lars. Young.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll maintain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please state your name and address where the record.
Where you want me, Bill.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Alderman Persons. I just wanted to give everybody a couple of updates really quick. We've been doing our Operation Clean Sweep, as you all are aware. We have forty-five properties that we've already made contact with. Thirty-one have complied. We have our normal ones. We're still working on. I'm sure many of you are aware of them around the city. Same thing with junk cars. We're working on those as well. The residents at 609 West Racine on the corner of Jackson and Racine, there's a raise order we're working on for the garage right there. We're having a pretty difficult time with compliance there. So, but we're still working through that. And I just wanted to update the council to let you know that we are diligently working with that for trying to get the city cleaned up. And if you have any constituents, please forward any complaints to us so we can get those cleaned up as well. Second thing, Mayor, the last thing I wanted to just share with the council and Mayor and Administrator Freitag are aware of it is that with rioting going on in Madison, we are part of a mobile field force. We have a crowd control team of town officers. On Saturday night, there was a mutual aid request put out. We sent four officers up as part of that team. Sunday night, we sent five officers up. They got home in the wee morning hours after things kind of quieted down. We have two officers there tonight. We had one officer last night. The officers are doing extremely well for being called names, being pelted with rocks and bottles and other things, trying to maintain some order and maintain some control in downtown Madison. They're part of a countywide mobile field force. I'm proud of each of the officers. This has been a very difficult time, and they're very weary for what they're facing. So, I wanted the council aware that Jefferson City is part of that to try and help as a unified neutral aid front with all the other Jefferson County agencies. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any questions? With a chief pleasure. No? Then I'm going to ask Tim to give us an update on the reopening of city services, please.
So, the last council meeting, Ken and I shared what the reopen plan was for municipal facilities. I would generally tell you that that plan has been and continues to be implemented. The library opened to the public on Monday with limited hours. Typically, it's eleven to six each day. Additional hours will be added as demand so requires. Park shelters, playgrounds, restrooms. Our parks reopened last week. Recreational programming and registration is now beginning. Our municipal court has an initial appearance that's been scheduled for June eighteenth. Court was generally canceled going back to the early part of March when the governor first issued his safer-at-home order. Juvenile hearings will be conducted virtually, and that's generally by order of the chief judge in our court system. Our swimming pool, the project basically where the basin was replastered, has been completed. The pool's been filled. Swim lessons and adult fitness classes begin in about two weeks. There is no open swim that has been scheduled at this time, but our goal is to try to do that as soon as we can. And then lastly, as you know, the senior center is kind of that one municipal area that remains closed until further notice. And the rest of our departments generally were back a couple of weeks ago working pretty much normally, regular shifts. So, that's it.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions? It's Tim. Team, now we'll move on to number two, an update on the railroad route, time change. City Engineer Pennell.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I just wanted to notify the council. Over the past several weeks, we've had multiple calls from residents complaining about the train coming through at very early hours of the day or the morning. I did contact Union Pacific to find out exactly what this change was for. To give you a little background, Jefferson's part of the Climen subdivision route for Union Pacific that runs from the south side of Jefferson at Cold Storage up to Climen. From that point, there's another subdivision, the Adams, that runs north of Minnesota. Prior to the pandemic, Jefferson had trains coming through anywhere from seven AM to ten AM weekdays. Since the pandemic, Union Pacific, like many other businesses, have seen their business drop off considerably. So, they are currently combining routes between the Climen and Adams route and rerouting trains and schedules to accommodate that. What that means is that on a regular week, the trains are now coming through Jefferson. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, I was told between three and five AM, but I've also gotten some calls that they've come through as early as one AM. And that frequency can certainly be modified week to week or even day to day by customer requests, Friskies, Cold Storage, any of those, to be able to modify those routes. And as you may or may not be aware, Jefferson is not a quiet zone. Some municipalities are designated as a quiet zone, or even intersections are designated as quiet zones, where the train does not have to meet federal mandates to be able to blow their horns specific frequency and pattern. In Jefferson, we don't have any quiet zones. They typically require lights and gates. And because we don't have that, every intersection, I believe there's eight, the train needs to blow it in both directions. So, because they've changed their routes, they're doing that at anywhere from one to five AM, typically Tuesdays and Thursdays. But I don't know exactly what other days that we've gotten complaints from people. At one point, we did look into it just to see exactly what a cost of a quiet zone would be. We looked at one particular intersection that currently is not signalized, and the cost was anywhere from two hundred to two hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per intersection because you have to have Union Pacific design it, approve it by the Railroad Commission, and have lights and gates installed. So, it's just not financially feasible to be able to do that at even one intersection, let alone eight. I'm also told that this will be the pattern for the foreseeable future. So, not really anything that we can do about it, but certainly I just wanted to advise the council about it in the case that you guys get any contact from residents. That is the change in route from Union Pacific, and we can expect that for the foreseeable future.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone have any questions, Bill, on this topic? None? Okay, thank you. Proposed ordinance number four dash twenty will remain on the table. We're still waiting for some correspondence from FEMA for that. So, I'll move on to resolution number twelve, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Twelve. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for June second, two thousand and twenty is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for June twenty twenty in the amounts of five-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Payroll summary for May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty in the amounts of one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Council minutes from May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty of the common council. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We had operator license. We had one year and two years. Well, we had two-year licenses for Carissa Bender, QuickTrip, Belinda Kalinsky Fuller for Neighbors, Gabriel Keister for QuickTrip, Jacqueline Loinski for QuickTrip and Neighbors, Carleen Oberman for Rock Bottom, and Hannah Rector for QuickTrip. And then the rest were all renewals. We also had renewals for our Class B combination license contingent upon the finishing of the police inspections and recommendation for the Class A beer and cider license and the Class A beer and Class A liquor licenses and the cigarette licenses. I would so move.
It's going to move. Is your second? Second by Mr. Niles. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, or if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. I'm going to take a step back. Just, we have a couple other members of the public here and part of the family. Did either of you have anything that you wanted to offer for public participation? Just want to make sure. Okay. Move on to resolution number thirteen, a resolution to authorize the purchase of extrication tools. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Thirteen, authorizing the purchase of fire department extrication tools and equipment. Whereas, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty capital project and equipment replacement budget includes funding for the acquisition of battery-operated extrication tools. The purchase of this equipment would replace existing obsolete equipment which the fire department can no longer afford to reservice. And whereas, live demonstration of equipment were conducted in the presence of the entire fire department membership with fire department personnel having the opportunity to use the vendor tools to conduct their most common extrication techniques. Whereas, at the conclusion of the live demonstration, the fire chief has selected and is seeking approval to purchase a new set of Genesis extrication battery-operated extrication tools, including spreaders, cutters, and push-pull ramps from Reliant Fire Apparatus Incorporated in the amount of thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. The equipment purchase is to be funded with appropriated capital project and equipment replacement fund monies and an additional contribution of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars from the fire department general fund operating budget. And whereas, the finance committee has reviewed this matter and has incurred with the recommendation of the fire department, and now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that a hearing authorizes the purchase of extrication tools from Reliant Fire Apparatus Incorporated in the amount of thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars per their proposal dated May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. The purchase of the equipment is to be funded with proceeds from the capital project and equipment replacement fund, which is twenty-eight thousand dollars, and the fire department general fund operating budget of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is it a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Byer. Any discussion?
It's unanimous. That finance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number thirteen, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, or if you're opposed.
Alderman Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandle.
Alderman Brandle.
Just like his camera went off, I will come back. Young.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Mr. Brandle must have got disconnected.
Okay. Passes. Thank you. It passes by majority. Discussion on the two thousand and twenty-two Riverside Alley Streets Gate. Tim.
I'll start the discussion, and then I'm going to turn it over to Bill. Most of you, I think, excepting Allen and Chick, have sat through discussions of these projects before. But here's the quick skinny on this. Most of you know our plan was to reconstruct Plymouth Street from Wisconsin Drive to Main Street in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. That is a project that in that year, we were anticipating issuing a ten-year note to finance about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of improvement. So, our comprehensive five-year plan, which a lot of you sat through and helped put together, changes a little bit because Plymouth Street and that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of cost has a new funding source. The first page of what Bill handed out is the funding letter. We applied for CDG funding from the Department of Administration. They selected our project to fund as a grant. And that's really complicated, particularly since it's all tied to this closing out of our revolving loan fund. But nonetheless, that project is funded. We hope to close out our revolving loan fund and to do Plymouth Street in two thousand and twenty-one, not two thousand and twenty-two, and to fund it with these block grant proceeds, no longer necessitating the issuance of those ten-year notes. So, the question that we would have tonight is whether the council would be interested in a replacement project for two thousand and twenty-two, and that would be two projects that Bill is going to describe. And you're aware of both projects because I think they've been discussed at the full council before, perhaps again accepting Allen and Chick. Generally speaking, these two projects would be, I think, staff priorities to try to fund. You may have a different set of funding priorities, but nonetheless, both projects are generally important with what we're trying to do downtown and the area between Main Street and the river. So, I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill. And my last comment is that if these are projects that you would like to see programmed for two thousand and twenty-two, as Bill's going to tell you in a minute, they're complicated projects, and they involve work by the utility with overhead lines. And really, it would be almost a necessity, I think, to make the decision now and spend two years of planning to try to do this project in two thousand and twenty-two. And if the consensus is that we should try to do it, I'm going to ask Attorney Rogers to draft a resolution basically directing everybody work towards the goal of trying to complete these projects in two thousand and twenty-two, and we would bring that back at the next council meeting.
Thanks, Tim. So, I'm just going to run through these. And certainly, Chick and Allen, if you guys have more questions, I think the rest of the council's heard this multiple times. But so, I'll try to go through it as quickly, but with as much detail for you guys to understand. Essentially, what we're talking about with the alley project extends from Dodge Street to Candice. It's a Riverside Alley extending within those parameters. So, that's on slide two or slide three. Slide four is essentially photos of what the conditions are right now, one of the reasons that we're looking at this. Certainly, the condition of the pavement, the conditions of the backs of the alleys, backs of the parking lots, and the overhead. I actually just had a request on a right-of-way permit today that someone on the Hundred Block is doing a roof, and we have to close down a portion of Main Street for a couple hours to be able to crane everything on because they're not able to access the building from the backside of the alley. So, just to bring that up, that these things do come up from time to time. But certainly, the view of the overhead lines through there, I think everyone's familiar of what Firehouse Alley used to look like and what it looks like now. Vast improvement by putting those underground. Moving on to slide five, just really kind of shows the area that we're talking about here, Riverside Alley between Dodge and Milwaukee, Milwaukee, Racine, and Racine and Candice, including the parking lot behind Felton's. Kind of summarizing what we got in there is overhead electric services, twenty-one poles in between those areas. It's a sixteen-foot wide alley. We did have some of this boundary work taken care of, or actually, all this boundary work taken care of last year by Southwest Surveying. So, the alley is defined. We don't have any ownership issues in those areas. So, that was one of the items that needed to be done, and that's certainly been completed. Streetscape improvements. Certainly, we'd be looking at bike and pedestrian lanes, benches, ornamental plants, decorative lighting. One of the considerations is to be able to make that from a two-way to a one-way, to be able to make it safer through there for both vehicles and pedestrians. And then the lot at the north end of the alley resurfaced and striped for public parking because we certainly have inadequate parking along those areas for residents along Riverside Alley. Moving on to the next slide, kind of breaks it down block by block. So, this is kind of just a concept between Dodge and Milwaukee Street. Again, you've got a sixteen-foot alley. We'd have one-way traffic to the north. And then we're just showing a designated bike lane between those areas. And certainly, if you guys have questions as I'm going through this, feel free to stop me. Again, on each one of these blocks, there is parking, private parking lots that we would certainly hope, just like when we did Firehouse Alley, that the owners of those parking lots would try to take advantage of having contractor mobilized to be able to resurface some of those areas as well, to be able to improve those areas. Next slide's Milwaukee and Racine Streets, same concept, one-way parking. I would say here, we're showing the parking lot, which has been constructed at this point, where the old substation was, as well as some additional parking on the lower side on the city property, north of the Stable Rock. And then further to the west, there where all those trees are shown along the tree line, those trees have been removed, and that's the location of the future boardwalk. And really, this whole vision through here is one of the reasons that Rob Lewis was most interested in this property, not only the boardwalk, the parking lot areas, but also the alley to be able to drive traffic to those locations. Racine Street to the public parking lot. Again, we would be talking about one-way directional parking or directional alley. And then this is the southern half of the parking lot that is currently just a combination of gravel and asphalt that we would look at resurfacing down the line. And then on the north side is the north half of that parking lot and continuing up to Candice Street. I would also mention that this parking lot right now is designated as semi-parking. That has, we'll certainly draw some discussion as this project moves forward, if it moves forward, to be able to determine what the use is going to be down there. So, that's an item that'll have to be discussed in the future. So, I guess before I move on to the second half of the project, is there any questions on the alley itself from the council as far as what that project entails? Okay. So, I'm going to move on to the second half of what we would look at trying to do at the same time. And that's a streetscape. And again, the streetscape is something that we've talked about in front of the council before. One of the issues that this has been discussed in the past is we have some areas that you can see on slide ten where we have issues with trip hazards, mainly due to the types of trees that we have in the terrace. We have bricks lifting up. We have tree roots coming up. We have had pedestrians fall in some of these locations, specifically outside of Bon Ton, I believe outside of Indeco as well. It's areas where we have patched with cold patch to be able to at least minimize the trip hazards. So, this is an issue that we would like to, that we're aware of, that we need to address at some time in the future here. Just to give you an idea, and one of the things that we had brought in a previous discussion was what could we do downtown? And, you know, when you look at the previous slide of the pavers in here, the lights, the trees, the next slide at eleven is really an example of the proper type of vegetation that we should have down there, not necessarily the grasses. But we have trees that have smaller root balls, and they certainly are more appropriate of the size to the space. So, this is an area that's right off of Center Avenue on the east side of the city center parking lot. This is another shot of that same location. I would also mention that this is angle parking in front of this, whereas everything downtown is parallel parking. So, although we had looked at this at one time, this type of streetscape with the rocks and grasses probably is not conducive for what we'd be looking at downtown because you have people opening doors as well as snow removal in the winter. The areas that we really looked at as far as priorities and secondary, the green is really what we've identified as the priorities. Really, that's Racine Street, Main Street, and Dodge, essentially a corridor down to Rotary Park. But equally important, this is more from a budgetary standpoint, that we would probably look as primary and secondary is our side streets of Milwaukee and possibly north of Racine Street. So, some of the concepts that we had looked at is simply removing and replacing the existing downtown trees with smaller root ball trees. We would remove more than likely the forty-eight, approximate forty-eight inch width of concrete and pavers behind the curb. We would not anticipate that this would be construction from curb all the way to building fronts. This is really probably to enhance what we have right now with the proper concrete or pavers, permeable pavement, something to that effect. So, we're not talking the full right-of-way in these downtown streets. On the corners, this one is out in front of the landmark. We've got remove and replace existing brick pavers with potentially stamped concrete at the intersections. Some of the other ideas that we've looked at, or we've at least discussed as far as being needs, once the trees are replaced, you know, beautification downtown. We've talked about possibly adding poles for hanging flowers. Maybe we can utilize the existing streetlights and put hanging baskets on those to be able to be, again, add beautification down to the summer. And then potentially add electric power outlets at bases of trees for Christmas light displays during the holidays. We've also talked about the potential for, you know, maybe adding, you know, we've got a sound system that extends one block. We could add conduit to be able to expand that system down the line underground or even do some type of irrigation underneath these pavers so that if we did put planters or anything in there, that we had some type of self-watering. Again, those are all kind of brainstorming ideas. Everything's going to be budget-related, but it's things that we'd like to at least be considered. Tim, if you want to go through the Vandal Wall proposal, do you want me to do that?
No, I don't even think we're ready to do that, Bill.
Okay.
I think you should just jump to your last page.
Okay. Sounds good. The last is just an anticipated cost estimate of the projects. The top is the Riverside Alley project, and this is an estimate right now to basically pulverize the existing pavement. We would be adding four inches of asphalt to the alley, paving the parking lot. We anticipate that we will have some storm. We anticipate that we will have some stormwater improvements potentially to be able to add, allow some of the businesses to be able to put the roof drains into the city storm sewer. We may have some improvements there. We would certainly have streetlights, decorative streetlights down that area. And then alley streetscape, that would be, you know, a combination of benches, could be planters, things like that, too. So again, this is an estimate, so I've got essentially about $300,000 and I believe $16,000 for that project. I put a 10% contingency and then engineering for a total of about $380,000. That does not include any of the, any type of underground or anything like that. This would just be improvements to the alley, assuming the electric would be done. And then as far as the budgetary estimate for the streetscape, I just put in here an estimate of approximately, I think I've got that wrong in there, it's actually about $280,000, don't disregard that unit price in there. So I have an estimate of about $280,000. I have some proposal costs in there and then engineering plans for an overall project cost between the alley and the streetscape of about $700,000. The streetscape is going to be, that's an estimate that we really don't, because we don't have a scope defined at this point, I would probably say that that would be a fairly strong number as far as what we would use. And then we would utilize the design to get as far as we could along those streets, identifying the primary and secondary areas, and taking the project as far as we could go.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone have any questions of Bill or Tim? Any initial thoughts or impressions?
How old is the brickwork in front of the landmark?
That's probably a late 90s, a little over 20 years. It was probably about between 22 and 25 years ago that we did that. I want to say about 97, something like that.
I'm always wary of using stamped concrete on sidewalk, like especially public sidewalk, though low spots hold water and then continuously freeze. It doesn't run off like typical sidewalk. It's just something, just something to consider.
Anyone else?
I think if it turns out half as good as Firehouse Alley, you can hit a home run. I mean, that was just, that turned out beautiful.
So I think the question for you folks is, you know, we're kind of amending that five-year plan by moving up Plymouth Street, different funding source, freeing up these dollars. Is this a project that you would like to make a priority that we try to complete?
What's it competing with?
Well, I can tell you, we have more projects than we have money available, quite frankly. It's just we've been talking about these projects for a long time, trying to figure out, and they're sort of like kind of next in line. But I always say that because I think it really is important to make the decision today because this is two years of planning to do this. And a perfect example is, I mean, this is a rough project for the utility, and to Allen's point, I don't think we're necessarily married to the stamped concrete. That's just one thing.
Right, yeah, that's not a biker bridge.
Yeah, but I mean, a fair amount of things, it would be really good to decide now. And what is all I know is that, you know, the next two years, we want to work forward to try to do this in 2022.
Well, I think this is something that we need to go forward on. This isn't just like, you know, I want to put planters on and make the city look pretty. This is a safety issue, you know, those, you know, where the trees are coming up, we've got a tripping issue, and we've got the bricks coming up. I mean, this is truly a safety issue for the people downtown. This is something where we want to take care of those trees and the sidewalks, and in doing that, let's make the city look better. So I think this is something we've got to get going, get going on the planning.
I think we've been talking about this for two years, you know, now's the, it's time to stop talking and start doing. So a hearing, general consensus that this is a priority for the council, is that fair accurate?
That's my consensus.
I agree.
Ken? Bill and Benny?
Benny said yes.
Yep, definitely in favor.
Okay. Is Bill on a call-in?
He is, but...
I don't know if we lost Bill or not.
Or his camera's kind of...
He's on mute, he doesn't know why.
Sounds like his camera's on, but...
So can you come over that direction?
Yep.
Okay, good. Yeah, and to your point, Chick, it was competing with Plymouth Street as two of the highest priorities in the past, and so it's kind of reshuffling things a little bit, and certainly that grant opportunity provided a great opportunity for us to accomplish both these. All right? Thank you. We'll move on to our final discussion tonight about the Independence Day fireworks that were scheduled for July 3.
So in the interest of moving the meeting along, getting us out, I would say Ken and I, Dale, the golf course, the people from Festival Foods, kind of our partners in the fireworks, have been talking about July 3. Ultimately, I'd like the council to make the decision, but I will tell you the recommendation from Ken and I really are to postpone the July 3 fireworks to the Saturday of Labor Day weekend with a rain date of Sunday of Labor Day weekend. That would be the 5th and 6th, but we would try to do it on Saturday, September 5. We can postpone without penalty. We'll have a penalty if we don't do it on the 3rd and cancel it for the rest of the year, but we can move the date. And generally, what I think the discussions with everybody has been is that a fair number of people just aren't comfortable with the idea of promoting a mass gathering at this time. Everyone seemed comfortable waiting till Labor Day to do it. And I think it would also be fair to say is that the idea would be on the 5th to try to have a day-long celebration where the golf course plans a number of events, including food service, and kind of the day culminates with the fireworks, which probably would be shot off a little earlier since it'll be 3:00 or a little earlier. But is that an adequate description of our discussion the other day? But I'd really like you guys to really make the decision and not leave it to Ken and Disappointing as it may be.
I would make a motion to recommend moving to Labor Day weekend. And this is just discussion. It better be a formal.
We'll take a consensus after everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in, but anybody disagree with that?
Mine don't.
And just to echo what Tim said, in talking with Winter from the golf course, not only did we have concerns about the health of our citizens, but we'd like this to be a fun event for families, and we just didn't think that we could provide the same type of experience 30 days from now that we could 90 days from now. And just with regard, if we get a washout, we can't set them off that weekend. We have until the end of the calendar year to set them off, so we can put them off on New Year's Eve, which has been suggested many times in favor of many of us, so we'll see about that. But so everybody's okay with moving them formally to Saturday, September 5?
Yes.
Okay, good. That will be...
Hopefully tentatively? Tentatively, yeah.
No. We're doing it on the 5th unless something happens that prevents us from doing it then.
Okay.
So no, it's just, we have to make the decision now, Benny, to not do it on the 3rd of July.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So Saturday, you're saying?
Saturday, the 5th, then we would use our band, the portable bandstand again, make it available for them if they wanted to, we said if they wanted to do something, a party on the patio on Sunday afternoon and make it a weekend event. There's talk of maybe a fun run incorporated in this, but again, focus on, yeah, a best ball tournament. So try to provide as good of an experience and a healthy situation as we can this year.
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, did you have anything you want to add?
No, I think something's up perfectly here, sounds great.
Thanks for your direction, we appreciate that. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
And so move.
Mrs. Byer?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. On a voice vote, all in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, good night.